Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, February 13th, 2017. We'll begin by calling this meeting to order and standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and as always, I'll read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, we're in our public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our student advisory council.
Hi, I'm Christopher Bossi, and so some updates we have from the high school are, so on Friday, March 2nd, the freshman sophomore hop will be taking place. Any students who wish to attend the hop will have to file a dance contract at the office. Interviews for the Wakefield High School principal position are ongoing over the next few weeks, and finalists will be selected at the end of that period. And once the finalists are selected, parents and students will have opportunities to meet with the finalists. And finally, for this set of announcements, the Metco Advisory Council is going to be meeting on February 28th to talk about providing additional support to Metco students and also planning for International Night, which is going to take place at some point in April.
Hi, everyone. So tomorrow, we have a half-day with Block Order ABC, and lunch will be served as usual. Next week is February vacation, and the winter play is going to take place on March 1st called "The Anatomy of Grey," and it's going to be on Thursday at 7:00 PM in the Savings Bank Theater.
Course selection is happening right now at the high school with freshmen, sophomores, and juniors this week. In the week after vacation, they'll have the opportunity to go down in guidance and select their classes for next year. And then senior show additions are also being conducted this week, and senior show will take place on March 9th and 10th.
Anything for our advisory council?
I can't believe March, so you're already here. It's a good thing.
You know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our consent agenda. We've got quite a few tonight, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of these meetings as presented in the packet?
So, not second.
Motion's made in the second. Discussion, comments? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we do have some guests here tonight, so I think maybe what we'll do, Dr. Smith, maybe we can jump to some of your portion just to accommodate our guests?
Sure. That would be great. Thank you. First, I'd like to invite Wendy Phillips, our math curriculum coordinator, and Dr. Jennifer Thomas, our science curriculum coordinator, to come up and just give us a quick preview of our first annual, I hope, STEAM Interactive Community Fair. Everything I've heard about it, this is really shaping up to be quite an extravaganza, and I'm really looking forward to it, so.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We just wanted to come and share a little bit about what we've been working with the Community Task Force on in planning Explore STEAM. It's scheduled for March 15th, 2018, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Galvin Middle School. All Wakefield students, families, and staff are welcome, and it's going to be a hands-on STEAM exhibit with exhibitors from science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And we're looking to pair the exhibitors up with high school students, giving them an opportunity to kind of get a glimpse into the STEAM fields, so.
And we have a variety of exhibitors. We have over 30 at this point, and we have that open up until Friday. We have some smaller businesses and some larger ones. So we have Kid Caso coming locally from Wakefield, iRobot, a larger company coming to show their robots. We also have the Museum of Science coming, which is sponsored by Epsilon, and New England Aquarium coming, sponsored by the Savings Bank.
As well as several school groups are going to be having some students here and exhibiting.
Any questions, any comments about the Explore STEAM?
Sure, so.
Please.
So what do you hope, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the goals that you have. What do you want to come out of the first one with?
I think the goals are to just to build some excitement around the STEAM fields, to also give parents and students an opportunity to see what kind of school groups are available in the, in middle school and upper school grades, and then to make some of those connections for the high school students. The task force talked a lot about how we can engage everyone pre-K all the way through the high school level, so we're hoping that all of the age levels, there's something for all of them to interest in.
Yeah, and so kids will start to see a sort of a pathway for themselves in these, the integration of these disciplines, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And we gave you all a pencil, though, so there'll be pencils to give away, station check-ins using QR codes or stickers for the younger kids. We're going to have stickers for people that work in the STEAM field to be wearing that say, "Ask me about my STEAM career," and that'll be one of the stickers that students will be able to earn. And then we also have a lot of raffles that are going on, so we're really hoping for a really good turnout. We're really excited. The task force has been working hard on it, and we're excited.
I love the logo, by the way. I think it's terrific.
So that was Morgan Gianotti and the high school students developed that for us, and yeah, nice and colorful.
Nicely done, yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Kalman?
Is the format going to be like a trade show, where everybody have like a booth, and like the participants will go to the booth?
Yeah, we're going to have it set up with tables around the cafeteria, and every exhibit is designed to be hands-on and interactive, so the kids can stop there for a few minutes, do the interactive exhibit, and then move on to the next one. And we're designing a passport book so that encourages them to go to a science exhibit, a technology exhibit, an engineering, an art, and a math.
And then when they get all the stamps, they can put it into a raffle type of thing?
Yep.
Please.
Could you just talk a little bit about who's involved on the STEAM task force? I know when we first started, the idea was to engage, you know, parent and business partners and students and faculty, so who's currently serving on the task force that's put this together?
So we have several parents, a couple of community members, and then several educators as well.
Yeah, it's a pretty good mix, I would say, of some parents, some community members, staff, and ourselves.
Great. It's good to know.
Could you give an example of an interactive exhibit, like what seems like something kind of fun and exciting? I've got a ninth grader, and I need to, I need a hook.
So Patty Dorn from the high school is bringing her technology class, and they worked on building a computer. She's bringing that to demonstrate. I'm trying to think of some of the exhibits.
The middle school technology engineering teacher is bringing a robot, and they'll be able to, you know, design pieces and interact with it that way. There's someone just signed up a computer company, building computer games. So, yeah, there'll be a lot of, a variety.
There's a virtual sandbox. Cambridge Science Street is coming with the virtual sandbox. So, yeah, so wide variety that we have going on so far. Then the math coach and I are working on a math table with some puzzles to do, some computer games, so.
And any of the high school students, we've opened it up to all of them, can sign up to volunteer that evening, and we'll pair them up with one of the exhibitors, so they can learn hands-on, one-on-one with an exhibitor what it's all about.
Are you going to use the 3D printer at all over at the Galvin, you know, build a hand, or, you know?
I believe one group has signed up with the 3D printer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I recall one print on that thing takes a couple hours, though, to make one thing.
Right. Yeah, we had talked about making things to sell, but it, you know, we don't have enough time for it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you to our sponsors as well for making this possible.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming and sharing this with us. We really appreciate it.
I'm going to take some pictures of this and send it to other districts.
Yeah, we're actually, it's going to be filmed, so we'll have that.
No, I mean of the flyer. I think I'm sending it around to other districts. You see how far ahead of the curve you are.
Okay, next, I've invited Tom Banker to come and provide us with a visual and performing arts presentation. There's a lot going on in our, in the nation, in the state, around the arts frameworks, new arts frameworks coming out finally, or in the process of, and we just have such an incredible program in our K-12 schools, so appreciate Tom coming to talk to us a little bit about that today.
Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate being here. It's great to see you all. I'm going to have a short presentation with some slides, and then I'm interested in any and all questions that you have. My focus tonight wants, I want to be on the curricular program. We talk a lot about the extracurriculars, which of course are important for the, for all the students, but without the curricular program, the extracurricular programs wouldn't succeed in the way that, the way that they do. So, wonderful. So at first, just want to give an overview, like as, you know, where Dr. Smith started talking about kind of the standards and where we sit with curriculum in both the visual and performing arts. So in 2014, the National Core Arts Standards were released and updated with a complete update. They really simplified them into just four, three basic standards, and then did compile standards around those. And they defined that the arts are dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts, which was interesting because it split visual arts into media arts as well. In this, in our district, we provide in the school day options for four of those five. We don't have any dance classes that occur during the day, but we have media, music, theater, and visual arts in our district right now. These standards just are meant as guides for the educators to provide a unified education in arts K through 12, and that's how the standards are written. And then they led to the anchor standards underneath each of the standards. So the base standards are creating, performing, and responding, and then there are anchor standards under each of, under each of those. Unfortunately, Massachusetts is a kind of a little behind the curve in our updates. The last time they've been updated is 1999 with our Massachusetts arts curriculum frameworks. However, in '99, they were ahead of the curve. If you look at those, they are very similar to the current national standards. In fact, they use the creating, performing, responding as the basis for the Massachusetts frameworks, which then became the basics of the 2014 Core Standards. But on a positive note, I just received an email that they're putting together, from DESE, that they're putting together a team right now for facilitators, review panels, and integration members to start the review this summer of the 1999 frameworks, and to kind of update them with the new Core Arts Standards. So that's a good sign, that, you know, we're, now that the standards are in place, we're going to get those, get those updated and start to work on those at the state level. As far as where we are with curriculum, specific curriculum here in the district, we are currently in Phase 1 of the curriculum review cycle that the district has created, meaning we're in the research and review section. So with the upcoming state revisions, I'm beginning discussions with Mr. Lyons about how we should handle the timing of this. You know, if we're going to start this review and research query without the standards being in place yet, you know, maybe we should think about, you know, not doing the work before the other, before the base work is done. So Mr. Lyons and I are going to be discussing the best way to handle that. But the advantage that we have is that we, as in all the arts, K through 12, in visual, media, and music, we don't, we don't buy our curriculum. All our curriculum is researched and handmade by our teachers, constantly developed and changed. We made it, we make it by our teachers specifically for our children based on the standards that have been set forth. So, you know, we don't, we don't use kind of that pre-bought curriculum, so we're always looking at it and reviewing it and working on it for our kids. And then with, when the new standards come out, you know, that'll be, that'll be a new set of opportunities for us to make sure that we're continuing our progress. So the rest of the presentation is, revolves around our instructional strategy here in Wakefield, which is, you know, where we base all of the work that we're doing. So it starts in the quality teaching box. All of our teachers are participating in the five-part PD series, and they have since the beginning, and we have some teachers participating in some action research this year for real content, content-specific PD. I think that's something that we're working very hard to provide for our teachers in the visual performing arts, some content-specific PD that they can have to improve their content, not just the other PD that's provided, but stuff that's specific, which is hard to do. There's not a, there's not a ton out there, so we're working really hard to provide that, and this action research allows us to do that. All the teachers also participate in job-alike sessions throughout the year. They are members of PLCs that are focusing on student data and making data-driven decisions. Actually, just, I had met with a middle school music PLC today, and their student goal is around SMART goals for students. So students are creating SMART goals. So we're taking what we're learning as teachers and just pushing it down to the kids and giving them opportunities to do the same thing. So it's, it's a great opportunity for them to continue to work together to improve instruction for our students. We have a lot of curricular events that we host here. Here's a small list, a small list of them that are upcoming and the ones that have happened, and, you know, it's just opportunities for our students. Again, you know, we are very performance-based in all of our arts, visual and performing, so these are opportunities for students to put their work out there in performance, and for our parents and community to see the progress and the great work that our students are doing. And of course, for all of that to happen, you know, I think that it's important here to talk about growth mindset, and we always talk about performance, but, you know, if you, if you came into a band rehearsal the first day and, and, you know, heard what they sounded like, and then saw three months later at a performance, that would just, it would be apparent. I mean, the kids, the kids are, that's how we teach our classes, that there's always ways to get better, there's always ways to improve. That's how we do it as a group individually in order to get to the goal that we're looking for. And that also, you know, happens in all the art classes as well. Observing in the art classes is such a treat because you get to see these, I never walk into an art class and hear a kid say, "Ah, yeah, it's good enough. Like, I'm just, I'm just not going to do anymore." Like, it's fine. I mean, they're always working to get better, and I love seeing that in their group work when they're, in their, in their, in their classes in the visual arts. So quickly through next boxes under rigorous curriculum. We're implementing new curriculum and assessments in third and fourth grade music, including the third grade. Music teachers started a third grade choral program, which has allowed the third grade classroom teachers to have their PLC time. So it's been very helpful for the classroom teachers, but also for those third grade students to start to get in the big setting and working together, not just in their 25, but in their 50, 75, or sometimes 100, depending on the school, and start to work together in that setting. The elementary art teachers are writing curriculum focusing on second grade this year. They're working very hard to update their curriculum. It had been a while. It kind of, it kind of lapsed, so they're working really hard to get that up to date during their PD and their PLC times. The music teachers are incorporating the computer lab at the Galvin, the technology in there in all of their classes, not only in the general music classes, but also in all the performance classes with recordings and videos and, and all of that as well. And the general music classes in the eighth grade, the music appreciation classes has completely transformed into, into more of hands-on electronic music writing, composition class that is really, the kids really enjoy doing, and is really hands-on. They're not sitting in a room learning about Bach and Beethoven, which, I mean, that's fine, but this is hands-on. It's really what the kids are enjoying to do, and we're able to teach all the standards and everything through that curriculum. And then at the high school level, we have updated our curriculums for all classes, and we've written a bunch of new curriculum because we've added a bunch of classes over the last few years to really help with the needs of the students, which we'll see in the next, in the next box. So under individualized student learning, again, the new offerings throughout the district, and we talked about the third grade choral, the choral options, the fourth grade has a choral option. The high school has added visual classes, visual art classes, and music classes, all at the desire of the students. The students have asked for it. We've been able to fill the classes, and we've been able to offer those to the students to the best of our ability. One thing I'm always very proud of is that the classes, K through 12 are, always have been, are inclusionary, and they're heterogeneous. We have, you know, all the kids are in our classes. Kids don't get pulled out of our classes. Doesn't, doesn't matter, it just doesn't matter who you are, and, and if you want to be a part of what we do. At the choice level with the band orchestra chorus, you know, there, you know, no is not accepted as an answer. If you want to be a part, you're in, and we, and you're a part of it. And then at the elementary levels as well, the principals are very supportive of the students having those experiences and making sure that all of them, no matter what, you know, that their services are during other times, and that all students are participating in a full curriculum, not just in their classroom, but in, with their specialists as well. And one of the big things that we all teach our curriculum around in the arts is that it's, there's a lot of group work, peer assessment, especially at the elementary level. You would be just pleasantly surprised. I go in at like a second grade art class, and the students are critiquing each other's work with, with caring and, and not, you know, they're not mean about it. They're very caring of each other, and they're helping each other out, and just improving each other's work, you know, even at that level. Project-based learning to prepare them for being positive members of their community. You know, when we read the, the school committee mission at the beginning, and, you know, I think that really fits well into everything that we do day in and day out in the school day with our programs. And a lot of this is showing, just as an example, at the high school level, we currently serve 800 students in the performing, in the performing and visual arts, which is about 78% of the student body. We have 14 different math classes, or 14 different visual art classes, 11 different music classes that are offered there. And at the elementary in the Galvin, we serve 100% of students, K through 8. So we are, we are, we are full to the max, but, you know, all the teachers have such a passion for the students and for the work that they do and the curriculum that they do. And, you know, it's a great, it's a great day-to-day job. I love going around and seeing, seeing what's going on and being a part of, being a part of that curriculum and the work that's going on at all levels. And I'll just leave that there as a way to get in touch. Every, there are some great things going on on the website. Great, you know, there are videos and constant artwork and constantly being updated. The K through 12 Performing Arts website, you can get to every individual teacher website through that page. There's links right on the front, and that's kind of the home base for us in the performing arts department, K through 12. And it went longer than five minutes. I'm sorry, Dr. Smith. I tried.
No problem at all. We appreciate having you here, Mr. Banker. Any questions and comments?
Just a quick question. Could you just clarify what media arts is?
So here, you know, when we talk about media arts, it's our TV department. It's the work that our, that our TV teachers are doing in multimedia, which they've completely revamped that curriculum, and they're adding like 3D printing and, and more up-to-date technology in that curriculum, but also our TV production classes.
Great. That's what I thought.
Yeah, yep, sure. I'm glad that they finally separated it, because it really is a completely different animal versus than, you know, than where the visual arts are.
Absolutely.
Given that it's budget season, could you touch upon the impact your department has felt with the new graduation requirements? Is it one year or two years?
One year.
One year. But every student has to have at least one year of arts.
So I like to think that the increase in our enrollment, and when talking to students, has a lot, as much, more to do than the requirement in the fact that we have a beautiful new middle school with beautiful facilities and two superstar art teachers and great music teachers in that building, and that the students are having such a great experience that they're choosing that as they continue into the high school. I think that's a big part of it as well. That's a big change over the last, because this, the growth that we've seen is not a requirement growth. It's a four-year growth, and that growth started with the opening of the Galvin. And I think that had a lot to do with the, with the facilities and the, and the means now that those students had in that, in that building. So that's one. But I think that the requirement is also really, you know, it's putting a real burden on us. Last year, at the end of the process, at the end of the student selection process, and at the beginning of the, beginning of the summer, we had 100 students that had signed up for Studio Art I that couldn't take it. And so I think the best comparison to that is if your goal in, in your career is to get to calculus in high school, and you, and in order to do that, you have, there's a sequence of events that you have, a sequence of classes you have to take. It would, it would be like, if that's your goal, like that's what you want, and you're passionate about math, and you want to get into calculus, and you're told as a freshman you can't take geometry, you're done. I mean, at that point, you're working from behind the entire time. You're trying to take two math classes. You're trying to get yourself, you know, caught up so that you can take calculus as a senior. And in this, it's not only that, but for a lot of students, and I've seen it over my, you know, 11 years of teaching here and being a part of this, you know, that's a real outlet for them. Those, those music and art classes, like that's their elective. They're choosing to be there. That's a way for them to really be creative during the day, and it's a big passion of theirs. And, you know, we've seen many students that the reason they come to school and they graduate is because of these classes and these real, and these passions that they have. So it was really hard. So we, what we ended up doing, again, with such great staff at the high school, was one of the high school art teachers made some, you know, gave some changes in her schedule so that she could fit another section of Studio Art I. So she's really, you know, working extremely hard to make that happen. So we had 75 kids that couldn't get into Studio Art I. And that was, and that was, and that's how it, how it worked itself out. So I'm concerned about what it's going to look like at the end of February. Mr. Beebe and I are going to have a interesting sit-down when it's all done, and who signed up, because what I'm concerned about is that not only is it, was it 100 this year that ended up being 75? What are those 75 kids going to want as sophomores? Do they, you know, they want to get back in and start that? But then we have the middle school numbers coming up. Is it going to be another 100 kids that we can't get in? So now we're up to, you know, how are we going to continue to, to, to make this, to make this work, especially at that first level, that basic level, that kind of, you know, that's your jumping off point in order to get to where you want to go in the art, in the arts, visual art side?
And is increased staffing going to be enough to solve the problem, or do you have facility restrictions as well?
So there are, there are fixes to the, like, we can work on the facility thing. There are places in the place, in the places in the school that we can, that we can, like, we, you know, we, Mr. Metropolis and I have talked about it, and, and I think that, you know, that, I think that will all work itself out for sure, and we've, and we talked through that. I mean, just the idea of possibly, you know, it's, you know, I submitted for it. I asked for it. I've asked for it for a couple of years. I knew this was going to happen this year, and so, you know, I'm hoping that in the end, you know, we can, you know, it works its way through, but it will be, you know, it will be, would be a position that would be used immediately and completely filled with full classes in order to get, get us caught up on what we missed from last year. You know, it's, it's a great problem to have. Community supports the arts. The school district supports the arts, and the kids are so talented, and they, and they really want to be a part of it, and, you know, it's a great program, it's a great problem to have, you know, but.
I can't think of another department other than, you know, the core academics that are required that would ever touch that high percentage of our kids.
It's great to see, yeah. I was, when I did the numbers, Chris, I was expecting it to be high, but I wasn't expecting it to be that high. It was, it was really, it was great.
It's a testament to your hard work, you know. The department wasn't where it is when you came here, and that's really a testament to all the work that you've done. And then I've often said, you know, I think our kids would walk over through fire for you. And it's not because you're, you're mean and you don't, you know, you don't make them afraid. They want to do it, and that's such a big difference.
I appreciate that. Kids are fantastic. I love all of them.
Mr. Leakos?
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Tom. A really informative presentation. I want to echo Chris's, both Chris's and Ann's comments, and I... I want to echo Chris's, both Chris's and Ann's comments and I appreciated the the way you talked about the arts curriculum in terms of the the overall instructional strategy and how integral it is to everything that we're doing as a district. And again, you know, the arts education in Wakefield, such a point of pride for the whole community and really, really wonderful work. And I think, as Chris mentioned, that we've advanced so much since we created the position that that you filled in aligning the curriculum. It was great to see the work that you're doing at the elementary schools too, so encouraging to see that. I had a couple of questions, just trying to think about the point you made about the comparison with calculus in in terms of the goals and 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 the visual and performing arts to allow kids to, you know, really reach their full potential through the curriculum in advance and as in any curricular area. And I, we've made so much progress in in both visual arts and in music, but I'm wondering, is there still significant work to do in the dramatic arts? And and is could part of that be also trying to think long-term about developing more at the middle school level? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So there are no curricular drama options until high school and currently there are two semester classes available at Wakefield Memorial High School.
Okay, so when you think about it compared to where we are, that the visual and and music, there's a lot of work to be done.
There is, for sure. The extracurricular is where the the students really get an opportunity to to work with that and we have great teachers that that work in the extracurricular, both at the middle school and at the high school. We just finished, you know, just a middle school musical that had a hundred actors and actresses on stage and forty and forty members, sixty members of the crew. We finished, we had a high school musical in the fall, they're getting ready for their Boston Globe Drama Fest production now and then we'll do one or two more plays in the spring. So we we try really hard in the extracurricular side to provide some of that base theater theater curriculum that we don't get to do during the day. You know.
I just wonder if I could just also intercheck, you know, in these conversations we're having around, that involve later start time, we've talked a little bit about sort of dreaming and thinking ahead, Ms. Lyons and I and Mr. Beebe and and it's about maybe a flex schedule, a flex schedules. One of the advantages of going in that direction is to allow a schedule to breathe and and students having an opportunity to add an elective to their program. It's one of the problems is when you have a, how many periods is the day, G, G block, how many is that, seven?
Seven, six in a day.
Yeah, six in a day, seven total classes. It's, it can be very limiting from a scheduling perspective in terms of what students can take annually. So that's some of the things we're really thinking about for the future is how to allow that schedule to flex, to allow for opportunities to add, for example, you know, a theater arts course that kids actually have time to take. A lot of the problem is kids just not being able to fit everything that they need and want into the current schedule. So I think that's we need to keep thinking in that direction too, if we want to get dramatic arts and even dance opportunities in the school day.
Yeah, so I was thinking, if you don't mind, Kai, I happen to know you're a very talented artist, right? And so, because I've seen your work at the WPS Visual Arts Night. And I remember you and I talking about this, so you you're not taking any arts courses this year in part because you have an ambitious academic curriculum, right? So you're an example, right, of the time crunch, right? Yeah, yeah. But if you if you had your druthers, you'd take another visual arts course, yeah, yeah.
I think a lot of it too is a lot of kids who are like competitive academically and want to keep like their GPA up, there aren't a lot of base level art courses that have that AP or honors standard that you can, that you would be able to take, whereas like you'd be kind of downgrading to a CP class, which would bring your GPA down. So for a lot of the kids that are kind of like competitive academically are restricted to like the the STEM courses.
Right, right.
Without the arts.
We'd actually take it down there, but what if I thought that one?
It's also part, it's all a piece of a very complex puzzle. And that's what some of the things we're really thinking about is to create some of these flexible spaces where kids might be able to take some of that programming without worrying about something be a detriment to their GPA or something like that.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
I just want to compliment you, Tom. I love the hands-on training and and teaching part of it and just kind of structuring to fit the needs of each kid with the ones in front of you. I think that's excellent. I think the, in general, the performing arts and extracurriculars and even the elective classes that we offer, I think that's really what inspires the love of learning, just like the slogan says and what really makes kids really interested in going to school. And I'm just, I'm just glad to see that it's still growing. And just out of curiosity, just reviewing the presentation, is the state reviews and changes, is that going to put more of a burden on the leaders like yourself when that comes around?
So if it's like it's been in the past, I have a feeling that, like most states, you take the national standards and you look at where you fit in your in your state. And in Massachusetts, we are always very ahead of the curve when it comes to when it comes to education, we want to be on that front end. You know, I I don't think it's going to be more of a burden, I think it'll actually be more helpful because right now the curriculum frameworks from ninety-nine and the standards of two thousand and fourteen are a little incompatible. So you're kind of.
Needs the update.
Yeah, you're you're kind of, you're, you're kind of playing, you know, whack-a-mole as to which which, you know, where you want to really follow and and dig into. So I think it's going to be more, I think it's going to actually be more helpful. I'm really looking forward to see what they come up with.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
The new Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, was very strong supporter of the arts during his time in Lawrence, so that's a good sign. I'll try to take advantage of that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Banker, for coming tonight and thank you for all that you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come tonight. On my other agenda pieces, just a few things I want to mention. One is I just included in your packet that the Savings Bank is partnering with Wakefield High School to hold a first annual, they hope, Credit for Life Fair at Wakefield High School. It's on Wednesday, March twenty-eighth, and it's a simulation of the financial obstacles that students face throughout their lives. They'll learn about managing a budget, spending money wisely, managing their finances effectively. So all are welcome to come to the fair. It's from seven thirty in the morning to eleven AM on the twenty-eighth. So was really pleased to see that partnership between the Savings Banks and Wakefield High School.
How will that work? Is it going to be like an assembly type of thing?
I think, you know, I'm picturing it, I don't know the details, but I'm picturing it in a kind of a fair setting, so I'm guessing it'll be in the fieldhouse with booths. Do you know a little bit more?
I do because we ran this at the school I work at and it is so awesome.
Can you talk a little bit about it?
Each kid would get kind of a folio that would then tell them what their job is, how much money they make. And then they would go to different tables because they had to figure out how they're going to pay for their housing, they have ex-student loan debt, so even though they're a lawyer and they have a pretty decent income, they have a ginormous student loan. Then there's like funny things like a wheel.
Grab us a plate of water.
Write that down. Exactly. You know, they'll have a wheel of of random things, like you win a hundred dollars in the lottery, you know, it's, it's really fun. And I honestly didn't think that the students, it was just for seniors, would ever get into this. I thought that they would think it was sort of hokey, totally into it, because the people that they had were the actual professionals, you know, furniture salesmen, you know, were there and bankers and, you know, car salesmen and and apartment managers. So it was real life. I think it's fabulous, so I'm glad it's here.
Yeah, sounds fantastic.
Yeah.
Look forward to that. Also, I wanted to let the school committee know that as I had sent to you a while ago, the district review self-assessment that we did and the Department of Education booked their onsite visits from March five, six, seven. I wish we had a little more advance notice than that. That is right around the corner and we will be in the midst of all kinds of our principal interviews and so forth, so it's going to be a little bit chaotic. But I will email you within the week on the times that they're just going to be inviting the school committee to come in and just to be able to to talk with the panel. So I'll let you know what that looks like as soon as is possible. And speaking of the principal searches, we have two happening simultaneously, but I have to say it's been very exciting. The Greenwood principal first round and the high school principal first rounds are completed and we have three finalist candidates in each pool, so we've got it narrowed to the three. We started the second round process this week and by the end of this week, we'll narrow it to two. And then at that point, we will be visiting the candidates at their school sites, bringing them in to do meet and greets here with our community. So we really have a lot of, a lot of exciting action happening, but really outstanding candidate pools.
With the three, but they're still not considered finalists?
So they're technically not, I'm using the word finalists a little bit loosely, we're really going to identify them publicly when we go from three to two. So at the end of this week, correct.
End of this week.
Yeah, and I will, at that point, announce the names publicly when we go to two. Yep. It looks like we'll, the deliberation should be done by Thursday, I think, for Greenwood, will be the end of this week. The high school, looks like we're going to end up being about a week behind our original timeline because one of the candidates is going to be away for a week and a half and it is well worth waiting for the candidate to return, so. So that's where we are, so I will keep everyone posted on that. And then my last announcement that I just wanted to let the committee know about is that for the last few weeks, we've had kindergarten registration underway in the district. We opened our registration on January twenty-second this year. We had centralized registration, which has really made such a big difference in improved product, improved effectiveness. It was largely an online registration process, but then families came in to central office to, you know, bring in paperwork and to meet them in person. At this point, we have two hundred and forty-one students registered with twelve classrooms across the district, that's about twenty per class, so it looks like we have, you know, a good amount. Our objective is to have four classes per grade at the two large schools and two classes per grade at the two small schools. That would be the best and optimum distribution, so we will be looking at that tomorrow. Ms. Lyons and I have a meeting to begin that process. And, you know, we were just very clear to families that the criteria for school assignments is largely based on the zoning map, also students' special education needs, and we'll also be looking at equity of class size across the district and, of course, timeliness of registration, you know, so hopefully people, you know, came in during that window. But we'll be, we'll be looking at that starting tomorrow and I will report, report back on that.
Quick question. I probably should know the answer. We're going to have kindergarten in Walton.
We certainly hope so. That's the plan.
Yes.
Yes, with confidence, with confidence, yes.
Two kindergarten classes there.
Correct.
And then four kindergarten classes at Woodville. And is that this fewer than what was at the Woodville before or, because I know we had the Walton kids do kindergarten at Woodville.
Right, so we we currently have six, which is basically the Woodville four and the Walton two at the Woodville, and we've had that for a few years. So we'll be transferring two of those classrooms to the Walton. And like I say, really the optimum situation is to avoid these bubble classes or the, I kind of call them the anti-bubble, when they're like one, one class too small. It really is not the optimum situation for resources, for staffing, for facilities. So I think that's one of the reasons that I really wanted to talk about and think about bringing kindergarten registration centralized so that we can really navigate those waters. But the plan will be two at Walton and four at Woodville. And we're also meeting with staff the Monday after vacation that could be affected by the move and starting that planning process as well.
Okay.
I just had two thoughts on that, they, it just popped into my head, but when we move the students back to the Walton, there's going to be a big shift in specialists that didn't have to be there before for the for that grade level. Now there's a bigger demand on the specialists in that building, right?
So we've already met on that and Mr. Bankard is our guru of all things elementary school scheduling, so he met with the principals and I two weeks ago and we mapped it out and and he knows that the goal is to make that move, so he's already working on that. It's a major scheduling challenge.
And and how does the two forty-one compare to previous years?
So it's a little hard to say yet because I I always suspect, especially with kindergarten, that there will be families that, you know, just didn't get the communication and might come forward, but we're in the ballpark of where we would expect to be. So if we, if two forty-one divided by twelve classes, about twenty, twenty students per class across the district, we usually run about twenty-two, twenty-three.
It almost sounds, given our average class size in the other grades, it sounds as though there's still a certain percentage of people still going to private?
Yeah, I think so. I think, well, I don't know, it's, it really is hard to say. I think what asked me in a couple of months and where we've landed, I just suspect that the number will continue to go up a little bit.
Because our other classes are like two sixty to two eighty usually, right?
Right, right, right.
So I would expect that they're either, either we have a depression in in the number of students or we have, there's still that percentage out for private.
Since we've gone to full day tuition free, our numbers have gone up, so I'm still really anticipating that the number, the numbers will go up. But we'll see where we land in a, in a couple of months. So I will keep everyone posted on that. And that is all for me.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Smith. Mr. Piffling, my thanks to you for your patience in allowing us to accommodate our guests. The floor is yours, sir.
I need to be here either way, so. The business reports, just going to point out a couple of highlights, there's, there's not a lot to report, but on line one, you will notice that the potential salaries line, line one, went from a thirty-five thousand dollar surplus last month to an eighty, about eighty-nine thousand dollar deficit this month. We had missed a couple of key positions to encumber them. And this actually falls into line, this eighty-nine thousand dollar deficit, falls in line with our Title I cut this year. So it's not a surprise that we're in this position on this line, we knew this was going to happen and I just had to do a budget analyst to figure out, budget analysis to figure out where I had missed an encumbrance. And I picked those up. It was there and also on line six with the extracurricular, I'd missed a whole team of extracurricular positions when I did the encumbrance. So those two lines are now set up properly. Also, on line four, you'll notice that there was a big cut there or a big surplus there. We did get a grant in that paid one paraprofessional out of that grant that came in, so we were able to back out their pay out of the local budget into the grant budget, so. And then on line eight, pupil transportation, I had earlier in the year encumbered special education and regular education transportation and my staff did not know that when they were paying the bills, so that number continued to grow to a big negative until we cleaned it up last month or this month. So that should be straightforward going forward. So everything, you know, that that change with the salaries actually leveled out the budget from where we were last month, we're still about three hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit as as we've been carrying all year, so. Any questions on the on the local budget? Great, okay. Nothing really to report on the grants, not really much on the revolving accounts either, everything's staying pretty stable to where it has been. All of our revolving accounts look like they're in a very stable position. Certainly, circuit breaker could be more in a better position if we were to have been funded at a higher percent than the sixty-five than the state gave us. So just continue to watch, I know there's a lot of chatter on on the Hill about circuit breaker reimbursement, so hopefully something will change between now and June thirtieth.
Because the encumbrance is against them, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so if you, right now, we have a negative five sixty-two, but right below that, in a little footnote, you'll see that we are anticipating six hundred and eighty-two, so we're actually got about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar buffer there, but I wouldn't be too excited about that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's, you know, a couple of forty-five day placements and and whatnot can certainly affect that number, so. Not too excited there. But that's all I have for the business reports themselves. I believe the next item was was back to Dr. Smith for the.
So really, Mike and I can, can do this together, but I wanted to do an FY eighteen budget update and then kind of a look at where we are with the development of FY nineteen. Does any, does everyone have, I handed out. Does any, does everyone have, I handed out hard copies if I had emailed this too early in the week. So, the first really is to talk about FY '18 and really the unanticipated special education costs that were not budgeted this year, in concert with the really inadequate state funding and circuit breaker. And this is, I have mentioned this just a little bit in the past, I know Ms. Fortier, this is pretty much what you had asked about, and it took a little bit of time to kind of really see where we're landing with these numbers and where I believe we will land coming into town meeting in May. So, this is just a one-page information sheet, so just a little bit of just information upfront. We have about 3,500 students enrolled in Wakefield Public Schools. A little over 1% of them are in out-of-district schools, so 41 students are special education students that need to attend out-of-district schools. This is comparatively low. I showed you kind of the range of other school districts in our area, so we do pretty well keeping our kids in district. But nonetheless, we do have students that are out at 25 different school placements for a range of disabilities with a range of tuition and transportation costs. In regard to what the cost of these special education out-of-district placements are this year, the total cost of out-of-district schools is 4.254 million. The circuit breaker funding, offset by the state, this year, we only received 65%, which was $210,000 less than expected. State law actually calls for 75% reimbursement, so this was really a surprise to all districts that it was not fully funded this year. I think Mr. Pfefferling said that there's a lot of activity on the Hill right now around this. I included in the handouts a letter that went in respectfully requesting an appropriation of another $36.6 million into the circuit breaker account to distribute out to districts to help bring everyone up to the 75% level. I did copy the signature page that has Jason Lewis, our own state senator, on there, but there were actually six additional pages of signatures. I didn't send them all to you, you have them digitally, but, so there's a lot of effort to try to bring everyone up to that 75%. It has not happened yet, but they are continuing to try and advocate. I did reach out to our legislators at the beginning of this week, myself personally, and heard back from Jason Lewis and Paul Brador, both saying they were working very hard on the Hill on this, in this effort. So, at the end of the day, our current circuit breaker is 1.365 million, which leaves us needing about 2.88, 8 million from local funds. So, we were already starting off with, you know, what I would consider inadequate state funding, and then, you know, kind of the confluence of factors here, we had 11 unanticipated student replacements going into outplacement since the FY '18 budget was approved. Three of those were families that moved into Wakefield after the approval, so this is something that happens, this is very, very kind of a volatile, fluctuating thing. This doesn't always happen, but it does from time to time, and so this year, we just had some unanticipated placements. So, we really were looking at about a $690,000 deficit from the very beginning of the year with the combination of the 65% reimbursement and these 11 unanticipated placements. So, really, very early this year, beginning in October, I think I mentioned to you, we did a, a budget freeze, and what we mean by budget freeze is I asked all principals and budget leaders to encumber all must haves and to really project out, and then anything else other than that, they really needed to come to Michael and I and very specifically request what they needed. It doesn't mean that we haven't appropriated money for, for what teachers need and principals need this year, but we've really tightened our belt to try to recover as many of these dollars as we could, knowing that the stabilization account has $185,000 in it. If you're familiar with that account, that account exists as sort of the, it's like the snow and ice model for special education for schools, you know, kind of emergency money. So, we've been working very hard to recover as much as we could this year. We saved $146,000 in supply and personnel lines since October. We say supplies, those are not just classroom supplies, but that's everything from, oh gosh, office supplies, paper, custodial supplies, ice melt, every kind of supply line that exists in the district, just, you know, just going with those must haves. And anywhere in a personnel line we could save, we saved. An example is we did not hire the, the transportation dispatcher that we originally had intended to hire this year. We said, you know, we're just gonna put that off till next year to try to cobble together some more money there. And then, Michael has done some work really looking at other projected reallocations, so that we could look at our total effort, you know, kind of projecting ahead to the end of the school year, or the fiscal year rather. And one place that we know we can recover is with our post-academy, that revolving account. As you know, that's an innovative program we, we've put together here in Wakefield, and it's really helping us at a critical time right now. It's not necessarily, would have been my first wish to, to use that money for this purpose right, right away, but we have it, and it'll, it'll help us out this year, and then we'll continue to build that cover in the future. Also, looking ahead for, in maintenance and utilities, we're doing pretty well in several areas there, so we, Mike and I believe that, you know, come the end of the fiscal year, we feel like we can make up about $520,000 of that $690. And then, my belief is we'll need at least $170,000 from the stabilization account. So, at our next meeting, when I present my recommended budget, at that time, I will be with the support of the budget subcommittee recommending that we sponsor a warrant article for the purpose of withdrawing $175,000 to make up the rest of it, and we'll land on our, land on our feet. And then, we'll see what the state does. It would just only be a good thing if they were able to come up with more. So, before I move on to FY '19, does anyone have any questions on this that Michael or I could try to answer for you?
I know a lot of this was done prior to our last finance and facilities meeting. I think a lot of this information was in the minutes.
You've seen this, yeah.
But with tonight's budget reports, with some of these oversights, there seems to have been like $181,000 swing in personal services. Is that affecting these numbers as far as your?
No, the, these are special education costs. These numbers over here on the budget reports, those are anticipated, we anticipated having those. We did not build any of our sped deficit based on our monthly budget reports in any way, shape, or form. We knew we had a Title I issue, we were making that up internally from other lines. That's, that's the salary on one side of it, but we are still showing a $360,000 deficit in the budget. Now, from that 360, we need to get down to 170 to get to Kim's number.
Yeah, because I'm saying.
It's about $190,000.
But on, on the sped summary sheet, we're saying we saved $146,000 in personnel lines. Is that, is that, is that going away?
No. So, we, we saved some money in personnel lines by not hiring, and that's, that's one portion of it, the supply and personnel lines. We didn't save 146 in personnel lines, but we didn't hire a $45,000 position this year, so that.
But that's also reflected in your, your personal services.
Right, but we needed to make up $120,000 in Title I money that we lost this year also, so that's coming into the personnel line also. So, had we gotten the Title I money, you would see a bigger surplus in the personnel lines, but we have accounted for that on the, on, within the reports also. There are, there are other areas that we are covering the Title I money from, but it's reflecting in the reports.
Okay, I'm just, that, that big shift in, in a month is disturbing, that's all.
Well, that was just an encumbrance, right? There was an encumbrance, but we knew that we should have been $120,000 short in the personnel lines because of Title I.
Okay.
But you make up $45,000 from the position we didn't hire, and, and that kind of levels that out to the 120 area that we're at right now.
Okay.
So, good question, thank you.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to Kim and Mike, and also to Chris as the budget committee chair for the hard work you've put into this. It's, I know it's been a lot, I mean, and, and the other thing that I wanted to mention was how, I thought how constructive the conversations have been with the finance committee who have attended, members have attended the finance and, our finance and facilities subcommittee, and they've been very helpful, very constructive conversations, and I think we're all better educated about how truly difficult it is to plan for this element of education costs. So, just wanted to add my thanks to, to you and your team for the hard work you guys have put into getting us here.
Thank you, and I, and I appreciate the assistance of the subcommittee and certainly the budget leaders across the district. I mean, I really owe a lot to the principals and the other, you know, district leaders for really navigating this and making sure that, you know, teaching and learning was continuing, and kids were getting what they needed, while at the same time, really trying to determine, you know, what are the must haves so that we could try to make up some of this. I think one of the things you're seeing here, though, is we're not alone. This is not a Wakefield issue. This is a, an issue across the state. Everyone is struggling this year. I think you've probably been reading about it in the news.
Yeah, the fact that you had that many legislators sign one letter is a sign that this is a big problem.
Both sides of the aisle.
Exactly, exactly. And so, it's, and, you know, and in many ways, we're in better, a better position than, than many, so, so we continue to work on it. The reason that this page is so important in understanding this is because this does impact the FY '19 budget bill. So, these unanticipated student placements and this, most of this $690,000 is not going away. We now need to add that into the FY '19 budget. So, the next page and what I.
I can't answer questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So, one of the, one of the things I anticipate hearing, you know, from town, town meeting is if it's, and I'm not saying it's easy, but if we can take, if we can save $520,000, then, you know, we, we can certainly trim the budget and, you know, in general, and that's a concern of mine. Like, I, I sort of feel like, on the one hand, you know, we want to be honest about what these, they're not cuts, but what, what did we have to give up, you know, in order to make this happen? Because it's not money that's, you know, extra. Something had to give.
Right, and I think, so, Mike might be able to talk about this a little bit, but when we, when we go back to the amount that we were able to reallocate to support this, a big chunk came from the post-academy, and we are so fortunate that we had the foresight and the vision as a district to build that program, for a fair amount really came from that, so that was really helpful to us. We had to be just smart about certain things, too. In the, in the, another revolving account was the post acad, the Wakefield Academy. As you may know, we had a leadership change and a personnel shift this year, and because of that, we've had to, Michael, I really need to give Michael a lot of credit, Michael Pfefferling has really taken the leadership role with Wakefield Academy. So, we were able to kind of think creatively about looking at what percentage of his time and effort and work between now and the end of the school year is he utilizing to lead the Wakefield Academy, and then offsetting some of his, that small portion of his salary from the Wakefield Academy revolving account, which also helps create some space, if that makes sense. When you really look at the, or the, the fact that we're in good shape with utilities, that is, that's a really big one. We, are we still in good shape with utilities?
We're just getting into heat bills from January, so we're.
To date.
We're just getting into heat bills.
I know, my heat bill for January was triple what it was in December.
Another example in is in maintenance. So, this maintenance saving is we typically have about $100,000 in extraordinary maintenance annually, and we utilize that to its, you know, as we come into the summer months, to kind of repair, to fix, to keep, to really upkeep our schools. So, in the budget freeze, I've asked Michael to freeze $25,000 of that, not to touch it, because we need to make up some of this deficit. So, this is not money that is, was sitting around to play with. This is money that, that $25,000, we're not going to be able to use to do something that we would have done to improve our schools, to upkeep our schools, to maintain our schools. And then, when we look back, I think we were somewhat fortunate that, you know, we had this new dispatcher position in the budget. We need it, we're going to need it next year, and a lot of people are doing a lot to cover that role. So, Maria Sorreal, who's the director of facilities and transportation, is basically acting as the dispatcher right now. So, this is on top of her job. She's taken on this responsibility in order to save that amount of money going to this year, when we have our fleet increased a little bit next year, that really is not going to be possible for her to continue to do that. So, really, other than those moves that I just talked about, we probably cobbled together close to $100,000 in, in that sort of overall supply and other like personnel, you know, there's always a combination of personnel things that happen during the course of a year, whether it's leaves or different things, we might be able to save a little bit here and there. And then, the supplies, I mean, it's, it hasn't been easy on anyone in every office, every school, you know, basically to say, listen, we, we have to live with what we have, and, and so, you know, I, I think we, everyone is prioritizing in the right way. I think we're prioritizing what's happening in classrooms with kids, but we literally are out of pencils in the central office, you know, and have been for, for a while, you know.
Grab a couple of the steam ones.
I grab mine when I grab kids before we leave.
These are the kinds of things, so we are, we just tightened our belts to make, to make it work, but this is not what I, this is a short-term solution.
Right.
Not long-term living.
But I think we've drained every possible, to make up this $500,000, to do our part, we've drained everything. Usually, we carry $100,000 in circuit breaker every year. We will not be carrying $100,000 in circuit breaker next year.
Yeah.
Even though the reports show I've got $100,000, if you look at the other report, it shows that the, the sped tuition lines are over by $100,000, so those are gonna wash. The, the, the post-academy, when writing gives us our money every year, we've been putting into a revolving account. We've been spending some of that every year, but we've been keeping a little nest egg. We're gonna basically wipe that amount out also. So, so every little nest egg that we had, every rainy day fund or anything that we had, we have tapped everything going into next year. So, it's a one-time fix, because that $500,000 is not going to be in these revolving accounts next year, or that $374,000 is not gonna be in a revolving account next year.
Right.
And when we built next year's budget, we did cut some of our utilities, because we, we saw that we had some surpluses there in our former previous budgets. So, that's another thing. I mean, those, those savings that we have this year are not going to be there next year, so, and I appreciate your question, because I keep asking the same thing. At least I was, you know, a couple of months ago. If we can make up $500,000, is that going to be the expectation of the school department every year to make up $500,000 to get us there?
Exactly.
And I think this is a one-time, you know, could we make up a couple hundred thousand? Possibly on a great year, but not $500,000 consistently year over year.
Right, right. I think one of the biggest concerns that I have is we have come so far as a school district in the last five years, six years. We've really, really built something very special, and I, it would be just a terrible thing to see that begin to disintegrate or have to undo all the unbelievable work we've done as a, as a school district over the last few years, so.
Right, I, I, I wanted more detail about kind of what you actually had to go through and what you needed to sacrifice, so that, you know, the folks.
How much we sweat, sweat and sweat.
Yeah, well, there's definitely the sweat, but then, you know, some of this is a little bit lucky, you know? We had kind of warmer weather, can't count on that, you know, so there, there are things that were definitely put in place, you know, not necessarily to anticipate this situation, but, you know, having post-academy, you know, as a revolving account, and certainly, you know, the funds we get from Wakefield Academy. But it, you know, if you're out of pencils, I think we're, we're at a place where I think we have, you have done what you can do for this year, and it's extraordinary, you know, but it is, I just want to be clear that it is a one-time situation.
I think the other thing we really looked at, were the optics of, the only other option really, was to go into town meeting, to sponsor a warrant article, to put more into the stabilization, to turn around and take it all out, to cover the deficit. And I think that that's, then looking ahead to FY19, that did not seem like that really would be, the optics of that would not be, would not be good.
Right, great.
Speaking of which, it hasn't made it under the agenda yet, but we do need to sponsor a couple of warrants.
So I'm hoping that at our next meeting, I've already reached out to Attorney Mullen and Steve Mayo for language regarding, you know, to get them set up, but the exact amount, I wanted to wait till tonight's discussion. I do know that of two articles that I'm thinking of recommending to the school committee, and to talk to the Budget Subcommittee, and we've talked about this already, and you'll hear a little bit more of this in a moment, would be, I think the first one that will be recommended would be for $175,000 for FY18.
No, yeah.
That's the first one. The second one really would have to do with our next discussion, which what is, what's happening in FY19. And so I just asked them to set up the language, and then we can talk about the amount.
Because the warrant will close, like, in March, I think, the end of May, in March.
Right. So my hope is that we can lay it on the table next meeting, and then vote on it March 13th. And I'll double-check that deadline, but I believe that that was, that was okay. So, thank you for that question, Anne. And then, so, like I say, this FY18 situation really informs FY19. The next piece that was in the little packet that I gave you, was just to, just to indicate that also at the State House, the Mass Coalition for Special Education Funding is really, you know, pushing to, for full funding for circuit breaker in FY19 as well. And this is just a little bit of information on that, so. So this really continues, I really think we have to advocate for the 75%, which again, I'll just emphasize, is actually state law, so that'll be really important. So going to the next page, and this is a really important conversation I wanted to have with the school committee tonight, and then I'm also on the agenda to talk to the full Finance Committee Thursday night. And really, this week, I need a lot of feedback over this, you know, from, from everyone here, and from the Finance Committee and Town Administrator, in regard to kind of the direction we might want to take with my recommended budget, which I'll come up with at our next meeting. So your feedback will be really essential to me. So the objective tonight on this one pager is, I'm not going to get into the specifics of line items of what's in the recommended budget. I do have a summary, kind of an overview. This is not to get into that level of detail. I will do that at the next meeting. This is really an overview of the financials, because there are really two possible approaches that I could take with the recommended budget. And I've talked quite a bit to the Budget Subcommittee and the Finance Committee Subcommittee about this along the way, and I hope this explains it well. So let me, let me explain it to you, and then we'll see what questions you have, and maybe any feedback that you're able to give tonight. If you want to think about it, digest it, and email me or call me over the next few days a week, it would be very much appreciated. So, so the starting point for the FY19 budget, the first important thing to note is that with just level service, which means, you know, salary, cost of living increases, steps in lanes, we are already at 4.04% increase from FY18 with level service, you know, and this is not even including what we know about special education. So a lot of conversation and kind of that landscape of the 4%, we're actually starting there before we've done anything. So I think that's important to note. And then when we add these known special education costs in, so this is taking that, what happened in FY18 and put that in, we are, basically, our budget starting point is we're at 5.49% for a level service budget, as an increase. This includes a $573,000 increase from FY18 in special education costs. And I just want to clarify that, you noted that in the FY18, I talked about $690,000, right? 690. This is a little bit of a different number, but that includes the fact that some kids age out from one year to the next, some kids are coming back in the district, some are coming out. So the Special Education Director did her work and put, you know, all of her known costs on the table, and that's the increase in special education from FY18 to FY19 is $573,000. And I think the main point here is this, this sort of unpredictability about special education that happens in school department budgeting over time. So, we were starting at a 5.49. In December, I had all the budget leaders give me their requests. What we typically do is Mike Pfeifferling adds all those requests in to see where we land. Once all those requests were in, we ballooned up to 8.06. So we clearly knew that that, we had a lot of trimming to do, and we were going to need to prioritize and really scrub the budget, and really look at these requests, and think about what are the key essential priorities from their lists to keep us on track with where we're going. So over the next six weeks, we had these budget development sessions, and this is where it was just a lot of cutting, a lot of reorganizing, reallocating, really having kind of hard conversations about every single line in the budget, to get a few key priorities while I was working extremely hard to get this percentage down, as far as I could, I could. Certainly, always in my mind is this sort of expectation that we try to hold around that 4% mark, which I knew to a certain degree might be somewhat untenable, but we were certainly working very, very hard in that direction. But at the same time, really thinking as the superintendent, what are those kind of key things that we need? So just a kind of a summary, and again, this, I'll go into more detail at the next meeting with the details of this, but in regard to the cut side of things, you know, we cut 4.0 FTE through staff reorganization, projected retirements, did some cutting through supplies, maintenance, and heating, some areas that we really thought we could, based on this year's numbers. We included our grant offsets. And then as, somewhat of a wash, but actually, we came out, you know, really kind of pulling that number down, I was, added the key priorities, which were a 2.4 FTE in curriculum and student support, adding to our district line for student intervention services, and an upgrade of our library media center, print and digital collection and resources. So those are kind of those key priorities. So we were able to kind of work with that over the course of six weeks. So now we get to our landing point. So this is where I am. These are kind of the hard numbers now of where I am coming into my recommended budget in two weeks' time. So the increase from FY18, when you include, you know, the level service and the special education, is 5.3%. If we add the Phase II activity fee reduction, which I personally am very much in favor of, that was something we really set out to do this year. Phase I last year, we reduced activity fees for families by 20% with the hopes of doing that again this year. And so we will have almost cut activity fees in half if we make this Phase II move, which would be pretty exciting. So if we do that, we land at 5.54% of an increase from FY18. You can see that the 5.54 is actually a couple of ticks less than the level service from above. So we did well in regard to, you know, working with what we had to get to that point. If we were to move forward with a 5.54% increase, then I would recommend that we add to stabilization, or we fund the stabilization account from the tax levy at, you know, what we have been doing is putting in $150,000 to do that, get some emergency funding there for any emergency costs in FY19. So that's really, right, we're sort of loosely in the Finance Subcommittee's, I've been calling this like Option A. This is kind of the landing spot. These are the numbers. But I had been thinking a lot about an alternative option, and talking with my colleagues about another way to look at it. It's the same amount of money, but it's another way to proceed, a different way to proceed. If we were to remove $500,000 from that special education number, and took $500,000 out of the budget from that 5.3%, the number, the percent goes right down to 3.98%. And that brings us to that sort of expected 4% mark, you know, in terms of the, of the local budget, the in-district general education and special education services that we provide here. By removing the $500,000 and kind of, you know, putting that aside for a moment, we're looking at that $500,000 as, you know, those out-of-district costs that can be fluctuating over the years. If we took the 3.98% and add the Phase II activity fee reduction of 20%, we land at 4.22%. It's a little bit over the 4% mark, but it's pretty darn close, and we get to that activity fee reduction that we're looking for. So if we took this route, the idea would be to fund the stabilization account from the tax levy in 2019 by putting the $500,000 in the stabilization fund, to cover those escalating special ed costs, perhaps add another 150 or so. Need some feedback on the amount, we think, but that would be that sort of snow and ice, the emergency piece. So maybe a total deposit in FY19 to stabilization of about $650,000. So basically, we'd be coming in close to the 4% number and let some of it live in stabilization account. Again, overall, either of these options are really the same amount of money, but just two different ways of approaching it. So at the bottom here, I put down the benefits and the risks of this alternative option. The benefits of this alternative option is that the school department budget comes close to that 4% expectation, and it highlights special education trends and the insufficient state funding. It also invites transparency and collaboration around an unpredictable portion of the budget. So it kind of really is just this very transparent look at this is what's happening, not just in Wakefield, but everywhere, and it's a way of maybe tracking, hopefully getting some support from our legislators, and for our community to be able to kind of look at that and be able to kind of see and look at kind of long-term trends and where we're headed. The risks of doing it this way, I think are worth noting as well. One of the things we have to just be really aware of is that every time we deposit money or add funding to the stabilization, it requires a majority vote at town meeting. Anytime we withdraw money from stabilization, it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. In this particular model, a deposit and withdrawal would likely be necessary every year, and in May, the first one might be a little clunky, but probably, in the years following, would probably have to utilize both the May and November town meetings, having money going in and going out, and would be monitoring as a community what that looks like. And those deposit and withdrawal amounts are really projected to increase annually. I mean, this is, this is not something that's going to happen for a year or two and then go away. I mean, this is, this is something we'd have to really look at trends over time. So those are really the, kind of the, that's sort of the reality of where we are. This is what we're going to need and what we're going to need to do. I really concur with what Greg said and Chris said earlier about, our Finance Facility Subcommittee has been outstanding in really informing this conversation, and our liaisons from FinCom have been really terrific. They've been there really participating in this conversation with us and talking about the options, and we've had really healthy dialogue about which is the right way to go. And, and so at this point, I think I really wanted to bring it to this full committee, and then I'll bring it again to the FinCom this Thursday, say, these are our options here. I'm really hoping to kind of get a very good feeling of what we feel like we can rally around together as a community, and, and hopefully, if I'm able to do that, that's what I'll put on the table on February 27th, so.
I just wanted to point out, in your minutes that we submitted at our last meeting, the Finance Facilities Subcommittee, after, you know, meeting with the FinCom representatives, endorsed Option B. They felt as though that was a much more transparent and accurate indication of where we were, that, you know, had we not been hit with these, these big increases within the spent budget, we certainly would have been able to come in at the projected increase that we had talked about a couple of years ago. But with the $570,000 increase, or $578.3, I'm sorry, that was just not going to be possible, but we're trying to make it that, you know, make it perfectly clear that that is the problem.
Just as a point of clarification, Chris, you said the FinCom liaisons voted for Option B. You said after meeting with the full FinCom as well?
No, we have not met with the full FinCom.
Okay, so that was just the-
This was our-
School Subcommittee.
School Committee, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
There's, there are two or three members.
Right.
You know, I believe Dr. Smith is going to speak to the full FinCom later this week, but, and I think that's just informational, there's no voting taking place at that time either. But I think we're trying to respond to their request to be brought into the loop earlier, and with more, getting more information sooner, so that they have time to kind of digest it as they go through their whole process, and not catch it at the end.
Mr. Lee. I would just add that when you think about it, too, I mean, this year could, the other potential advantage is that this conversation could be a model for future years as well in terms of, you know, the back and forth between the school committee and the Finance Committee leading up to town meeting, kind of planning ahead. Everybody has clarity about where we need to be, where the stabilization fund needs to be, the deposits and withdrawals. It could be a much better, more integrated process year to year, if it's done right. That's the other potential benefit, so.
Michael thought we should clarify, too, that if we choose this sort of alternative Option B here, that we, the second warrant article, so we would need the first warrant article for the 175 for FY18, then the second warrant article would be for this 650, or whatever we land on as the number, to fund. But I think we just have to be really clear that 500 is coming, I mean, these are known costs. This is, this is not a, that snow and ice kind of model. This is, we know we're going to need to, in FY19, go, go back for the vote to get the 500 out.
And actually, it's entirely, I'm sorry, it's entirely possible that the Finance Committee will, I've heard some comments along the way, that they're not sure that 150 is enough.
Right.
That they may actually recommend more.
So, I mean, someone new to the, new to the table here, this 500 was just going to be peeled out of our budget entirely.
Correct.
And it's really out of district placement, correct? That, that's-
Specifically targeting that, yeah.
Specifically that, as opposed to, I mean, we keep talking about special education costs, but it's not special education costs in general.
Because a lot of special education lives in the, in the budget.
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
Exactly, and I just-
It continues to live. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
It continues to live. So in our budget, we would still have both general education and special education in the, in the budget, and then this would be more of a, just kind of a transparent look at some of the volatility, if you will, or the unpredictability, might be a better word, of what happens in special education over a period of years, and that, that number can really move. But it's really focused on out-of-district placement.
Right.
I do want, this might be actually a good time for me to mention to the group that I did add one additional page in your packet, and I showed the Finance Facilities Subcommittee this little artist-
Didn't copy very well.
What's that?
It didn't copy very well.
It didn't?
Better in color.
You can still see it, and basically what it is, and I should have had one for the TV audience, but it really is just show, it just is a depiction of equality versus equity. And basically, what we mean by that is, what equity really means is that every child gets what he or she needs, and that's not the same for every child. And the reason that I thought this is important is that, one thing that's important, that I feel is very important for me to say as Superintendent of Schools, is whether that $500,000 lives in this separate account or in the local budget, you know, we are not, you know, pitting general education and special education against each other. This is, this is all kids getting what they need appropriately, and it's really just, it's just kind of thinking about financial mechanisms and how we can forecast better, or how we can plan better, and, and all of that. But I do think it's really important that this isn't, that might be one hesitation I've had a little bit about it, is just, is by separating it, I just don't want somehow for people to look at that number and say, well, you know, boy, that's an awful lot of, awful lot of money, or to kind of start to look at it differently. I just, I think it's just really important to say, all kids get what all kids need to access their education.
Right, right. I mean, I think the other thing to point out is that not just the volatility, but the mammoth- mammoth costs around that volatility. So sure, there's volatility in any budget. Lots of unexpected things come up. I mean, we might have 100 new families who move in, and then suddenly we have 100 new kindergartners, you know, but we can work around that kind of thing. I mean, it would be hard, but this is enormous.
And this is what makes the school department budget really very different than all of the other budgets, right? I mean, I think you've talked about that pretty eloquently, Mr. Piffling. I don't know if you want to add to that, but it's a.
I mean, the other town departments have difficult budgets also. And like the school department, it's very heavy in personnel. We're a town, we're a municipality, we have personnel costs. They don't have, outside of snow and ice, they don't have anything that's so.
Predictable.
Unpredictable, or even if it is predictable, so skyrocketing year over year. You know, if we need a new fire truck, it's a capital purchase. It goes on a separate warrant article altogether. Police cars goes on a separate, separate, what's that?
Water mains.
Water main breaks, exactly. Redoing, redoing street work, it all goes on a different budget. It doesn't come out of their local budget. So when, when the town says all departments 4%, that's great, but how can we stay at 4% with, with these special education costs? And I think that the way Dr. Smith has prepared these documents shows that we can stay at 4%. We are, we are at 4%, and we're adding user fees or reductions in user fees, and we're adding a couple of key positions that we need. What's missing is the special education piece. And there is a piece of the whole special education in district that we have covered in that 4%. All of our, all of our special education teachers, all of our services in district, we've covered within that 4%. This is strictly our out-of-district placements that we, we have very little control of.
Right.
And it's not like snow and ice, because we know it's coming every year. We know it's going to be here. It's not, you know, we might get a snowstorm in January. No, we have the snowstorm. We knew about it in September. The snowstorm's here. We're, we're bearing the brunt of it. These are things that we just need to, you know, put into our budget or find a way to fund it elsewhere.
Right. And I would, I would also add that, you know, we, these are kids. We can't cut this. These are services that not only should they have because of equity, but they must have because of the law.
Right. That's right.
So unquestionably, this has to be funded. And in my opinion, in order for us to be able to really manage the knowns within our budget and serve the kids, the, the whatever percentage, the 95% or whatever, of the students that we do fund and serve through our budget, then, you know, I think pulling this piece out just simply as a capital expense, I was, I was, I wrote a note here, I'm thinking, what, there's got to be some other comparable situation in town where this happens, and I, so we're not outliers, you know, in that sense, then I, I, I think that the, the alternative option makes the most sense. I feel like we have more control over it, and I think we're still funding the students fully, regardless of what their requirements or needs are.
Mr. Leakos. Thanks, Rob. I think that's really well put, and it's also, I think, you know, when you talked about the benefits, you know, you mentioned state law. I mean, I think, I can't speak for all of us, but I think the, the laws around special education are, are good laws in the sense that they, they do aim toward equity, but to implement them, you need resources, right? And that's where the legislative advocacy is so important here, because, you know, it's that term, an unfunded mandate. In this case, I think it's a mandate that is a just one and an important one, but it's got to be resourced, and we can't do it alone. And so just wanted to reemphasize that point.
Mr. Massey.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Greg about the, the cost of, of special education is just crazy high, but the fact that it's just 65%, they just drop it out of nowhere is, is ridiculous. So that's, that's definitely challenging and frustrating. I did have one question, though. What, can you kind of explain the, the stabilization fund? Is that like a big number that's added up over the years, or is that a set aside number each year that always gets used, or?
So in the past, it's a number that was set aside for future needs if we ever needed it. I think the way Option B is, it's, we're putting it aside now knowing.
It's going to be used.
Knowing that it's going to be used.
Yeah.
In the past, it was set aside in case we ever needed it. And it was started with $330,000 four years ago. We used $150,000 one year, it left us with $180,000. We're going to use 175 of that, we're going to ask for 175 of that at town meeting for FY18, and then we're going to ask, depending on the FinCom recommendation, potentially funding $650,000 of it in FY19, with the expectation that 500,000 is going to come right back out and be used to, to fund the deficit that we're, we're facing.
So, yeah, besides this one year, it usually just varies as far as how much you need.
And under this scenario, Option B, it's going to be this way every year.
Yeah.
It will be 500 to 600,000 deposited every year and withdrawn every year. But it gives us transparency. I mean, there are questions about where we spend our dollars, and this is one thing that we can, they can actually point to and say, we know it's going to special education tuitions. So, you know, if that makes people at town, whether it be school committee or FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and, you know, just residents of the town question where our, our dollars are going, where we're expending our dollars, it's a very transparent way of doing that.
Right.
Yeah. The other thing that came up in our meetings that I'll just share is, maybe based on your question, RJ, is that the, one of the things we all said is maybe in hindsight, we should have been putting money in every year, regardless if we needed it or not, because that's not really what we did when we first opened the stabilization account with that sum, $360,000 or something a few years back. Some was, was withdrawn, and in the last three years, we did not withdraw, nor did we put any in. And I think we all just kind of, said all of us kind of missed that sort of thinking that perhaps if we had been putting money in every year, we would, you know, would have been able to get a bit more out this year, so. So that was a part of the conversation.
Thank you. I have a quick question for context's sake. We keep talking a little bit about kind of the volatility of out-of-district placements. Dr. Smith, Mike, is 11 unanticipated student placements after the FY18 budget? Is that a, that must be a high number of unanticipated out-of-district placements?
That's, that's a little high for us in Wakefield. I was looking, reading in the Globe the other day about a district that had 25, so it's, you know, it really, that number can really move around. I feel like 11 was a little bit high for, for what we've seen, that, you know, again, you know, I'm coming out with a recommended budget at the end of February. There's an awful long way to go before, you know, school starts the next year, and a lot of that happened in that time period.
And to be fair, I mean, Lynn O'Neill did project some of those 11 to us last year during the budget process, but they weren't known. They weren't solid, and it wasn't fair for us to budget them, because that would have actually put extra money in our budget that maybe we didn't need if these children didn't go out of district. These aren't all 11 move-ins. These aren't kids from a different community that came into Wakefield. They were already, a lot of these were already in Wakefield. You know, we were having discussions with their families about what their next move was going to be, where they were, you know, whether they were going to stay in the Wakefield public schools, whether they were going to go to a collaborative placement, whether they were going to go to a private setting. Those conversations were happening, but Lynn hadn't come to any agreements or settlements with any of these families, so we couldn't, in any good faith, put these numbers into the budget before the May, the May 1st of last year, or even February 28th, when we both voted on the budget last year, presented the budget last year. So that's, it's, it's not, I just don't want somebody to say, oh, 11 kids moved into Wakefield. That's not what happened. Some kids did move into Wakefield, and if they move into Wakefield and they go to a collaborative school, that's on us. They move into Wakefield and they go to a private setting, it's not us until the second year. The first year is not on us, it's on the previous district. But the same thing, we could move out of Wakefield, it's on us for that first year also, because we budgeted for them, we planned for them, and we can claim them on circuit breaker. So that's just, that's really how the special education program works for out-of-district placements. But those 11 were not, some of them were known, or projected, or anticipated.
It's just three of them.
Three were move-ins.
Three were move-ins, and out of the, out of the remaining eight, I'm sure Lynn had at least four of them on her radar, but she didn't have settlements, she didn't have.
And that was made clear last year. I'm reminded of the phrase, we're going to budget for what we know.
Right.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Which is all you can do. I just want to echo the point that Mr. Massey and Mr. Leakos made about the legislative advocacy. You know, this is absolutely a partnership, and I think it's patently unfair for the state not to be meeting their obligation, that is, that is their commitment in this law. I think if there's room for advocacy as a school committee around that issue, that's something that we should really look at, because these costs are only going up, and circuit breaker is something that is promised, and is promised at a certain percentage, and we're not getting it, and I think that that's a serious disservice. With respect to options A and B, I think that this is frankly a very interesting and innovative conversation, one that I'm thinking about. One thing that I do want to mention is, where I'm coming from in terms of Option A or B is whether or not it's a prudent budget move, this Option B, to be taking money and putting it into stabilization, knowing that we're going to be revisiting it every year. I'll be upfront in saying my thinking right now is that it probably is. Having going from year to year to stabilization, you know, it may be clunky at town meeting, especially in the first year. The stabilization fund is there for a reason. We're not alone in doing this, and I think this is an innovative solution that does rely on a partnership between the town and the FinCom and the school committee, and there's a lot to be said for the transparency that is involved around that. I would just ask Dr. Smith if in your meetings and in your conversations with Steve Mayo and with the FinCom, you may be able to solicit their opinion on that, on, because this budget in a way is going to be a bit of a different commitment from year to year, because we would be kicking off a different procedure for special education funding with this budget. So that, that needs to be a point of conversation with the various stakeholders.
But I just, I really want to be clear that this is not special education funding. This is special education placement. Like, I feel like that's a different thing, because we, we have funding for most of our kids that are in special ed. What I worry is, is sort of, to use your word, Dr. Smith, the optics. We're pulling out all the special ed kids and putting them in this pool, when in fact, it's really, it's, it's certainly students, but it's, it's extenuating.
It's just the out-of-district.
Very specific to out-of-district tuition.
Exactly, and I, and I feel like we just need to.
Maybe, maybe even when I outline it, clarify that more.
It's not even 100% of the out-of-district.
That's true, it's not really.
Yeah. I just want that to be, because I just really don't want families to feel like it becomes an either or.
Agreed.
And it's not, I don't think it's fair to say it's all out-of-district either, because there are some in-district kids whose services are, have gone up over the last year since we built this year's budget, and we did absorb those costs into the budget built for FY19. There is, none of this 500,000 is for, for those, those students, but truly, it could have been. We could have said, we're funding the out-of-district, but we need the stabilization to cover the in-district costs. This is just the way we modeled it, that we said that this 500,000 is needed for out-of-district. Some of that's actually needed for in-district, but we covered that within the local budget and covered less of the tuition. So, I mean, we could have said we need 500,000, which is 400,000 for out-of-district and 100,000 for in-district, but that, it would have been more clunky, I think, at town meetings. So we said we need 500,000 for out-of-district. It is truly a district-wide situation, and it's not strictly about out-of-district or in-district, or, or one of the, it's a combined of all education.
Right, but I feel like the volatility, though, does seem to lie with the out-of-district placements. Is that right, or is it six of one?
If you look at the 690 on one side and the 563, that's $140,000 delta there. That is, some of that is from in-district students, some of it's from kids aging out, but there is some, some in-district costs that we absorbed in the local budget. To put an exact number to it would be very difficult.
Sure.
But.
And bringing, we bring students back in, too.
Bring students back in, and when those students come back in, they, they may need services, and we have to hire somebody to do those services, but it's not nearly at the cost of what the placement cost would be.
Okay.
So.
So maybe we don't have to say specifically that it's, you know, purely out-of-district cost. I just want to be able to phrase it in such a way that we don't, it doesn't appear as though we're segregating a population.
Right. I absolutely agree. Right, exactly.
Can I just make one quick suggestion, Rob? As you were talking about the legislators, I was thinking, you know, in the past years, we've, we've had our legislative delegation here, so maybe think about that again. Put this number one on the priority list.
Absolutely.
So I hope that maybe over the next week, so next week is school vacation, and by Thursday, I think Mike and I feel like we need to have the budget book log to print, so I'm very curious to get the feedback from FinCom on Thursday, and then if, you know, over the course of the week, if you don't mind emailing me or giving me a quick call and say, you know, this is Kim, this is what I, I feel like I could support, I'd really appreciate that feedback. So I really have a good sense of what our community is thinking as I come into the next meeting with a recommended budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay.
I have some payroll warrants, yes, sir. Could I ask the school committee to approve payroll warrant number 28 and 30?
So moved. Exactly.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
And moving on to the gifts, I do ask that the school committee accept with gratitude a gift of, sorry, $1,000 from the Wakefield Cooperative Bank for the Parent University Program.
So moved. Seconded. Made and seconded, discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
The next gift is that I ask that the school committee accept with gratitude a gift in the amount of $200 from Rada Boutique for the Doyle Early Childhood Center.
So moved. And seconded. Motion's made and seconded, discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
The next gift is from a, a matching gift of the Greenwood School. This is from the, the State Street Foundation Matching Gift Program in the amount of $100.
So moved. Seconded. Motion's made and seconded, any discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
The next gift is for $430. It's from a multitude of donors throughout the community, and these donors made donations to the Boys Baseball Program in memory of Roger Maloney.
So moved. Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Miss, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you.
And our, our final gift this evening, similar to the last one, is a gift of $410 from multiple donors for various donations made from the Girls Softball Program in memory of Roger Maloney.
So moved. Seconded. Excuse me, made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Piffling.
Okay, we will jump straight to Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Facilities. Mr. Callanan.
We have scheduled to meet Friday morning.
Excellent. Labor and Personnel, Mr. Markham is not here. He did ask that we just mentioned the forum that's coming up on the 15th with the Superintendent Screening Committee. That'll be Thursday, the 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Savings Bank Theater. The Screening Committee members will be there, School Committee members may very well be there. It'll be a great opportunity to have your thoughts, you know, put before the folks who are going to be vetting the first round of applications. Policy and Planning is for you.
I have a motion that we move that the School Committee approve Policy 404 Student Activity Account Interest Earnings as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, anything on this? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, future dates and agenda items, Tuesday, the 27th will be our next School Committee meeting. School Committee Comments, Mr. Massey.
Sir, thank you.
Mr. Callanan.
I'm good, sir.